Okay. Call to order, the Quincy City Council Finance Committee. And at this time, I'm going to read in the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Thank you. Okay. We're starting the public meeting. I'll make a note to councilors and we'll deal with it when it comes up to the DPW. Everyone should have received a memo about some mistakes that were in the budget that are looking to be corrected, but they're all in the DPW budget and we will deal with those when they come up. So everyone should have that memo, just to make sure everyone has a memo. And at this time, I'd like the clerk of committees to read the roll.
Counselor Andronico. Counselor Kane. Counselor Devine. Counselor Debona. Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy.
Chairman Phelan.
Present.
Seven members at a time.
Seven members, we have a quorum.
Okay. We're going to start off with the first item before us, which is the Health Department. Molly?
Good evening, councilors. In the budget, what we are looking to do is a couple of things. First is to increase our rodent control budget. The second is adding an inspector, tobacco compliance officer. And then, we're looking to do increases to our pump-out boat, office supplies, and educational supplies, and everything else is level funded. Happy to take any questions and address any of your concerns.
Any questions from any councilors? Counselor Harris?
Motion to approve level funded.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, on the motion, Counselor Devine.
Just the rodent control, I just wanted to kind of ask you about it because it seems very important to people. It's a non-poison, is it? Can you talk about that a little bit? How we're using it? Because it's a lot of money, but it seems like it's something exceptional that we need to be having for the city.
Yeah, so after I proposed the budget last year, the pest control vendors, the contract expired, so they had to go up in prices due to gas, cost of pesticide. During last year as well, the mayor had approached me about finding an environmental-friendly alternative for pest control, and that is what we did. So we worked with Modern Pest Control. We did a trial run this year. To date, when I left the office, there have been about 700 captures in the city. So it's environmental-friendly, it's safe for kids, you're able to use it in parks, you're able to use it at schools, public areas. It's been very effective so far. So in this budget, with the increase going to $450,000, that reflects Modern Pest Control, Ladybug, Clancy Brothers.
That's great, because I have a lot of constituents that have, you know, we have Hawks, we have an Eagle around here, and so it's good to know that we're not baiting every single thing. And O'Rourke Field, you were telling me that we captured a lot there, which is great. And you said 800 captured this year?
700 captured.
700. And you mentioned before, when I met you, that that could be up in around close to 10,000 possibly, that would keep from them growing?
Yeah, so, you know, during mating season for rodents, nobody wants to talk about it, but, you know, they can produce up to a dozen each month. So by taking 700 off of the streets and they're being captured, you know, you're preventing a lot of repopulation.
Excellent, great. It sounds like an awesome project, and thank you for finding it and bringing it up to our city.
Thank you.
Counselor Andronico and Counselor McCarthy. Counselor?
Thank you. Just bouncing off of that, I know in years past, we've only been able to do rodent control mostly on single-family homes. Has there been an adjustment over the past year, even moving forward, to maybe assist, you know, multi-unit housing with rodent control?
Yeah, so for rodent control this year, we did look at the option of doing multifamily properties, owner occupied, with a tenant being a family member. We didn't have too many cases of multifamily, you know, this year, but we do look to expand it next year with this increase, that we should be able to do more multifamily properties. I would say two-family properties, you know, should be considered in this.
Okay. I mean, that would make a big difference, because most of the point is multi-unit, and, you know, that's typically where you would find more of those types of issues. I know a few calls on Law &amp; Ave about rodent control in the past, but I'd appreciate it if the department would consider setting aside some funds for specifically multi-unit. Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Molly.
How you doing, counsel?
Good evening. Hey, great job the last couple of years with everything. I knew you had big shoes to fill when Ruth left, and you knocked it out of the park, did a great job. Just not for tonight, but I know we had a long conversation today. I guess we go down the coyote path sooner or later. I know that it affects all areas of the city. I know the Vaxton Park, and the marshlands, and Squonham, and the neck, and whatever. And I know we had a chat, and I'd love to get together and talk a little bit more about how we can control that a little bit more. I've been getting a lot of people lately pinging me about that issue in certain parks, the Spring Marsh, down behind La Bracken, et cetera, where I know that there's coyotes down there. But I'd like to dig in a little bit more, if we could, at another night or another day, and talk about how we could address that to kind of curb possibly the population of the coyotes, or come up with a solution. That's all, and thank you, Molly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words.
Counselor Mahoney.
Hey, Molly. Well, thank you for calling. I did appreciate the fact that we had that long conversation. So just because it's a new position, the tobacco compliance officer, maybe you could just explain to people what that is? And I believe it's very important, but why don't you explain why you're bringing that in as a line item?
Yeah, so the reason for this position, first off, it is a non-union position. This employee had been in our department for the last few months through a grant from the state. They've been terrific in, you know, getting programs up and running, presentations throughout the city. And we feel as though, you know, adding this to our budget is very important. We have 102 licensed tobacco establishments in the city, you know, in parts, you know, not in every ward, but in some wards, we do get complaints of the establishment selling to minors, or illegal products being sold as flavored tobacco products or vape products. And so, you know, this city, I grew up in the city, and it's my home, so, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, they're not selling to the minors and that they are following city regulations and state laws.
And it's also to make sure, like, the stuff that we see in the vaping things that are illegal are not being sold to, and in the stores, and all of the other things that go along with that as well. Correct? And you did that in Brookline, too? Is that what you did? You mentioned that, too?
So in Brookline, about six years ago, I was a public health specialist and a tobacco coordinator. So, you know, bringing this is also important, because I did this in Brookline prior to coming here in Quincy five years ago.
And you still have some experience, success in that, in Brookline, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll be watching to see how it works out. I mean, I think it's an important thing to be watching on, because there's, we're adding multiple different things that are happening in the city, and just being able to coordinate and make sure we're watching those are good. I also noticed in your, I could be wrong about this, but it looks like in your overtime line, did you, you still have, you know, a month left, but you've got about 40% left in that budget.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think you're going to use the whole thing, or is it, you know?
You know, the overtime budget, we've never had an overtime budget previous year, so this was kind of our first run with it. You know, we can't really predict emergencies. We've also had two delayed emergency call-down trees that are run through the state that would be overtime for the department due to COVID. And now that COVID is, the public health emergency ended May 11th, you know, they're getting back into doing the emergency call-down trees. So I can't say that we'll 100% spend it, but...
Yep. Well, I like to say that, because we just put it up last year, and you're running about 40, I wouldn't cut this this year, but I'd be something that I'd watch for next year. And then if next year, you're running above, it'd be something that I would hope that maybe we could come back and tighten belts. Only, we're talking about $9,000 at this point, so in the budget the size that we have, the debt that we're taking on the city of Quincy, this is not really the thing that I'm massively concerned about. There was one other thing that I just wanted you to touch upon. I know you're doing a ton of things in the city, you know, from the mammogram buses to the, to all the things that you're offering to the city, but you're also doing, I think you have an incentive for food insecurities as well. Is that true?
You said food insecurities?
Food insecurities, I think you were talking about the farmer's market, I think. Is that still happening?
Yeah, so we're participating in the second year this year in the farmer's market. Last year, we conducted a survey, a nutritional survey. So we have, you know, staff members that are also part of a grant that, from the state, that are working on putting all the data together. And, you know, once that's up and ready, I'm happy to email it to each and one of you and show you the results. And we're also doing a survey this year again, too.
So that's part, that, the food insecurity is what you're doing, that's part of a grant, it's not part of the budget, correct?
No.
So, and this is just something that I'm going to ask, because I know that other communities, and we're not doing this here in Quincy, the COVID money, I always ask about the COVID money, because it's inspirational, what other communities are doing. And some of the other communities, what they're doing is, they're working with their food pantries and creating a, they use the COVID money to be able to make sure everything was stocked, and that people that were having food insecurities, it wasn't just at the farmer's market. It's very unfortunate that we didn't take advantage of that. I realize that you're not in control of how that COVID money was spent, but there were some real creative ways that other communities were being able to do that. I know for a fact, in Quincy, I've watched those food lines. I've been to volunteer days, when you go and you see how many people get in line for the foods. We do have food insecurities here in the city of Quincy, and it's heartbreaking to me to think that this is something that we didn't try to come up with a solution for when we had the opportunity with that money. I don't blame that on you, Molly, I just say that that's something that we should be more innovative with in the city of Quincy. And I know if you had the opportunity, you would have. So thank you very much.
Any other councilors? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the health budget?
Agreed.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Just to let you know, Molly, the only thing is, the raises will be held at this point, and we'll be doing those on a different, we're going to be doing those on June 12th.
Okay.
Okay? But everything else is passed.
All right. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Get to the next budget. Yeah. Okay. Next budget, tourism. Dangney, please come up.
Good evening, councilors. Some of the current initiatives and successful campaigns that tourism has included is our Expedia campaign. I know some of you are familiar with that. That's been a very successful campaign for us. Last year, we did over 65,000 bookings. And this year, we're planning to start our campaign with an increased buy and length of campaign to about 15 to 20 weeks, starting in July. This will certainly surpass our hotel bookings in FY '23. We've also increased content creation with social media influencers. It's another way of, another marketing tool that we can use to promote the city of Quincy. Although social media is relatively free, travel influencers are known nationally and internationally. They have a large following of interested travelers. This digital social media marketing tool reaches different target markets that sometimes print does not. We produce new marketing materials to include a new discovery map this year, user-friendly map showcasing everything Quincy has to offer. We are starting to plan in July editing and producing a new 24/25 visitors guide this summer for print in early fall. The shelf life of the guide is about 18 months, and we do this because we don't include events. We use QR codes for the events, because those sometimes change throughout the year. Recently, all the costs associated with paper and printed marketing materials have drastically increased for the overall budget of printing, the new visitors guide, and it's about 80 pages, and we print usually about 50,000 guides. We will continue in FY '24 to develop and increase regional and state partnerships, so we can leverage the tourism budget and increase our marketing power. Recently, we just received $20,000 from the Greater Boston Visitors Bureau, so we can do some of that summer content creation with social media influencers. And we will continue to look for those grant initiatives throughout FY '24. We'll continue with consistent engagement, community relations, and working with local hospitality businesses. We'll increase awareness about the new welcome center, as well as improvements to the welcome center, to increase visitor services and offerings, as well as overall visitation. This year, we opened a little earlier due to accommodate increased visitation, and the weather was cooperating this year. The welcome center staff reports that visitors are starting to travel earlier than last year. Both domestically and internationally, visitors are starting to arrive daily. We currently have six welcome center staff assisting with visitor services at the welcome center. We've joined several national trade shows and trade organizations to increase and leverage motor coach travelers to Quincy, meet with international and domestic travel buyers, and media to promote Quincy and negotiate future business. Some of the marketing channels we will use to reach our markets will include social media, digital, print, radio, television, billboards, trade shows, conferences, all of which are increasing overall pricing this year. Post-pandemic, many advertisers were offering discounts during destination marketing recovery efforts. Now that tourism is in full swing, which we're all excited about, they are no longer offering those special discount pricing, and most have increased their pricing structure. And lastly, I'm also currently organizing, designing, and gathering data for a tourism return on investment profile for the city of Quincy 2022 and 2023 Tourism Year in Review. Since 2022 was a full year of gathering data, we didn't have got a lot of data to go on before that. We're going to use that data and determine our progress moving forward, targeting specific target markets, monitoring visitation data, and improve overall marketing and advertising and communications. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Nina? Motion to approve? Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Mahoney.
Hi. Hello. How are you?
Well, first, thank you for all you do, because it's an important role. So could you just tell me, just for the visitor center, what days are they open?
Six days a week.
Six days a week? So what days, what, is it Saturday or Sunday?
The only day we're not open is Sunday.
Okay. And what time are they open on Saturday?
10 to 4.
10 to 4. Is there any chance in the summer, you might be open on Sunday? Because that's when a lot of people do travel, is in the summertime, and so...
Yeah. We're hoping that we could get another staff person to do that. Currently, we haven't been so lucky in getting someone to work on a Sunday.
Yeah, I know, it's hard. I mean, but it's just important. I mean, this is, our typical travel seasons for communities like ourselves would be in the summer, when the weather's nicer, and people are trying to do things with their kids. And it does make it a challenge for you, so obviously, I was curious about that. The other thing that I noticed, and I'm going to just keep saying what I've noticed in other communities, and I know that we're offsetting this with our, the hotel motel is offset, so this is an offset. Did you get to use any COVID money during the COVID time for it? Other than the discounts for advertisement, I mean, just COVID money infused into your budget at all?
For marketing and advertising, yes.
Okay. How much did you, how much was, were you able to use of the COVID?
I don't know the exact amount. I can get back to you on that, but I know there was extra marketing efforts.
Yeah.
Especially, I think we received some state tourism travel recovery grants as well.
I'm talking about specifically community, the community money that we have here, because in other communities, what I'm seeing in their budgets online, live, you can read them online, where you're actually seeing offsets to tourism budgets with COVID money that's being tracked. So I'm just asking that, because I don't know if there's, I think there's like a small amount of money there, but it'd be something that, maybe that would be something that could pull into the budget, it'll help you on Sundays if we would be able to track that. Getting the person would also be part of it as well. And then the only other question that I have, and it's always just a disappointment of mine, and it's not to you, but it's just a disappointment, because I know that Quincy Pride is going to be happening on June 4th, and I'm excited that it's going to be its sixth year, and I'm seeing social media posts of it, but I'm not seeing any of it in the downtown, in the Adams Hancock, where you have the poster up. It's got Flag Day, but it doesn't have anything else. And I noticed it has, you know, has everything that's marketing for the Quincy Center, but it's not marketing that. And that's an event that's being put on, and there's a commission for LGBTQI for the city as well. So I think that's something that we should be marketing as a city. It's not on our website, it's not in our, it's not in Discover Quincy. I know it's in your magazine, Discover Quincy, it's not, there's no flyer hung up outside your window for it. And it's just something that I noticed, because when we talk about inclusion, that's what we really talk about. We want to make sure that we're marketing and making sure that we're really making people feel that we're including them. It's not good enough just to say that we're doing it, we have to actually show that we're doing it. So, you know, those are the types of things that, when I see, and I look around, I question that. And again, this is, it may be sound like I'm saying it, too, I think that's something that we have to work on as a community together. So I know this is an offset to the hotel motel, so really, there's no cost to the taxpayers for this, so I thank you for all you do, because I know how busy you are and how much work it takes to do all these things. Because just even talking about the printed materials.
Yeah.
What's your staff? Just, I know that, like, how many people help you with all of that?
At the welcome center?
Yeah. Not the welcome, just in your general, your marketing and everything else that you're doing?
No one.
Okay. So I just want to make sure you understood that, that you're a one-person show, so I just, because it is, it's something that sometimes gets overlooked in that sense, when you're talking about your staffing up, but you're actually managing the whole thing. And as much as it's, you know, your job might, somebody might say it's a 40-hour week, but it's a seven-day job when we're trying to get people to come to the city of Quincy. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other councilors on tourism? The chair's just going to take a moment of privilege. I've had opportunity to drive around a lot of Massachusetts up to New Hampshire, and the one thing I used to never see was Quincy's brochures in it, and now I always see Discover Quincy. So you're definitely getting the word out of there. You're definitely getting the word out. I know that Lions International is going to be in Boston, and they, some of the people from around the country are already talking about coming to Quincy. So the word is definitely getting out, you're definitely getting information out there. And I just want to say, good, that's what we always wanted, and to see it happening is great. So you're doing a great job, and keep on going.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilors? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're all set. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Next, we have our city clerk.
Good evening, councilors. The proposed FY 2024 budget for my department starts with the clerk's office on page 46, and that is pretty much level funded. There is a change in the overtime education line increase due to new contracts with QPEA and the supervisory union.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made by Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Harris? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Seeing none? The ayes have it? Thank you. And then we'll move, if you don't go anywhere, we'll move right into elections.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Harris?
I'd like to speak prior to, if I could, having, if I may, chairman?
Yeah.
Thank you. With elections, I can only say, we worked together a couple of years, especially when the mail-in voting came out. Your team, your staff was awesome to me, and I can speak to it now before I couldn't because, you know, but the city of Quincy was recognized for, and I was recognized through my work for, thanks to you, your folks, the teamwork of, and the thought processes of getting, doing the thing right, doing the mail-in right. We worked together, and it was great. And I can't thank you enough, you know, those were stressful times, phone calls, but they weren't as many as many of the other, where the eighth largest city compared to some of the smaller cities across the Commonwealth. It ran, it ran pretty smoothly, so I can't say anymore.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for you.
I really appreciate that.
And please thank your staff, please.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
And they're recognized as well in this, because it definitely takes a big team to do it.
Absolutely.
And it's coming right up again. This budget will allow for three elections. There'll be September, I mean, excuse me, August, November, and then March 2024. And that starts right out of the gate of 2024. It'll be there January 2nd, starting it up.
Okay. Any other councilors on the clerk's budget? This is, we're on elections budget. Any other comments? Chair will just take a minute. Nicole, I've worked with you several times in several elections. I don't think people sometimes understand what it takes to put an election on citywide. It's a massive undertaking, and I've seen elections go awry in other cities and towns, and you see them in the news, but Quincy never has had that, and I think it's because of the hard work and dedication of the people who work on those elections. And I, I know what it is to do a presidential election. Those are tough, those are grinding. You start at 5:00 in the morning, and you don't finish sometimes. One time, we didn't finish till 1:00 at night. And just a lot of dedication, a lot of people volunteer, so great job, Nikki. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that I understand what you do, and we definitely appreciate what you do, and your staff, too.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? The ayes have it? And we'll move right on to licensing.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made by Counsel McCarthy to approve on the motion. See, anybody seeing no discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? The ayes have it. Okay. Census. Motion to approve by Counsel Liang. Anybody have any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? Motion carries. Okay. Nikki?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next item is engineering, and we have our Public Works Commissioner, Al Graziosi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow couns, not fellow couns, city councilors. Before we get into the budget, I'd just like to introduce the DPW management team and acknowledge them, along with all the men and women of DPW, for the fine work they do in a professional and efficient manner for the residents of Quincy, and I'm extremely proud of all their hard work. With us this evening is City Engineer Paul Costello, Superintendent Larry Prendeville, Business Manager Neil McCall, Operations Manager Mike Norton, and Program Manager Tom Henry. And they're here to answer any questions you may have that I may not be able to answer. Before you this evening are the budgets that include engineering, public works, snow and ice, collection and disposal, drain, and the water and sewer enterprise budgets. The DPW is responsible for many functions, such as snow and ice, trash collection and recycling, street sweeping, pothole and sidewalk repairs, catch basin cleaning, litter removal, weed whacking, and graffiti removal. We also respond to emergencies such as flooding, water main breaks, and sewer backups. We manage and maintain 15 pump stations, two water tanks, 56 tide gates, 187 outfall pipes, and 250 miles of roadway, and our citywide network of water main sewer lines and drainage systems, which includes 9,100 catch basins and 8,482 sewer manholes. We're also responsible for the water billing and citywide water meter system. The DPW also manages the citywide GIS asset management program. And in addition to the DPW, GIS demands, we have assisted other departments in managing their assets. Few examples are assesses map, maps, park department tree inventory, T-PAL's street signs and traffic signaling, health department vector control, and clerks redistricting maps. Working with City Works software, our GIS team continues to expand our citywide GIS capabilities. We're also responsible for managing and reporting on all compliance issues related to the DEP and the EPA, which has become quite extensive in the last few years. This past year, the DPW Water and Sewer Billing Department, under the guidance of Neil McCall, instituted a major software and hardware technology upgrade for water meter signaling, meter read collections, and customer billing. The billing software was upgraded to a cloud-based solution with new reporting tools and service features. New signaling towers were installed and existing towers rebuilt, and modernized to allow the water reading collection system to last another 20 years. Currently, the department is testing all of the 800 large water meters throughout the city, looking for unaccounted water, and working on a replacement program. looking for unaccounted water, and working on a replacement program. We've already tested 400 of the 800 large meters. Outside of our daily responsibilities, DPW is currently working on several capital improvement plans. This year, we're beginning the design and permitting of the Manet Ave Seawall project, thanks to this body agreeing to the funding. We're scheduled to reconstruct and pave 56 roads and sidewalks, place water mains on another 25 roads, open cut and sewer lining on another 80 roads, and continued crack sailing throughout the city. We're also managing and coordinating with National Grid, who are replacing gas lines on most of the roads that are scheduled for repaving. The Water Department just finished Phase 1 and 2 of the hydrant flushing program, and Phase 3 will begin this week. We have also assisted the Department of Natural Resources in the project management and oversight of the Marymount Parkway project, which should be complete next week. This work is being done on an incredibly aggressive schedule, but I'm very proud of our employees for the way they are managing and carrying out all these projects. All of these road projects and water mains were designed in-house, in a managed in-house by our engineering department, saving the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars yearly in design and oversight cost. So, once again, I want to acknowledge all of their hard work. And this brings us to the first budget, our engineering budget. You'll see in the engineering budget that we eliminated a position, engineer and training, and we added a junior civil engineer position. And one of the issues we've had is the engineer and training, we've tried for over a year to fill that position. And quite honestly, it's very hard to compete with the private sector for engineers coming out of college. So, we felt if we upgraded that position a little bit to a junior civil engineer, and the difference is, I think, about $12,000 a year, we might be able to attract a young professional coming out of college. We've lost a couple of interns that work for us because they went out in the private sector for higher pay. The other, the only other increase is we increased our overtime budget by $30,000. One of the issues, because of all the work we're doing, we need construction oversight. So, our internal engineers are doing all of that construction oversight in-house, which again is saving us a lot of money by doing it in-house. So, we're asking for that increase. The other, we've actually cut our contractual line item by $16,000. And the only, only other, we're asking for, and I sent a memo, the education pay, which was contractually agreed upon in the unions. One of the engineers was left out of that, so I sent a memo to the council for that increase. So, that increase would go from $25,883 to $28,685.
Councilor Harris.
I want to make a motion to approve, and on the motion?
Okay, you might also want to make the amendment to add money to that education.
Absolutely.
So, Councilor.
I'd make the amendment.
Motion has been made, Council Harris on the motion.
Thank you. Of, of, over the years, especially the last, what, four years, I've been the Chairman of, of the Public Works, and obviously, every time I've, I've called, I get a response. And I said this last night, your, your team, the folks behind, underneath you have the same professionalism as you have, Al. I mean, and, and your counterpart, Mr. Prendeville, who, who always calls me when you're not around to make sure that if there's an issue. And I know the other Ward councilors would probably agree, and the at-lagers, if they've called, with, with the response. Last night, I mentioned, I mentioned you and your, your department when we talked about what took place, you helping with the Donahue, as well as with, with Dave Murphy's group. It just was something that was, was taken care of professionally. And again, when there's been problems in the neighborhood in Ward 6, you've had folks knock on doors, communicate, and actually take the burden off of the phone calls that all of us would, would get, any of us would get, whether it be any of the Ward councilors. It's, it's, the professionalism I've found in your department is incredible for what you just described, the whole scheme of everything that you do from soup to nuts. Other than your, your chief engineer, I, I, you know, I do, you know, I don't know why you'd take a Don Bosco guy, but then again, 1979, but he's, he's awesome, and.
Couldn't get into B.C.
I wish I followed his footsteps in going to finishing, finishing a degree in engineering. But the money that's been saved by the fact that the engineering department, you know, bringing, bringing, bringing Paul on, and I'm just, again, you mentioned the, the water meters that, that year, the 400 that, you know, and searching out for, to try to save money for the city is, is incredible. There's a project going on right now with, as you said, with the capital improvements that's going on with, for instance, just the other day on Aberdeen Street, your group went out, I had a, I had a distraught resident constituent that, you know, you, you, you just made him happy, you, you, you made changes to what was going to be done. And, you know, that's what it's about, it's about, and it's, it's important to note, taking care of the people that we serve. And I think your, your department does that incredibly. And so, I want to thank you, everybody who works underneath you. And again, I made the motion to approve, and I think that, you know.
Thank you, Councilor.
I'd also, and, and, the amendment. So, you're amending the education line by $2,802. There's been, there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to amend the engineering budget by $2,802 on the education line. That will bring it to a total of $28,685 for, for our contractual item on the union. On the motion. All in favor on the motion to increase the budget? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? That will be passed. Now, on the engineering budget. Any council, there's a motion on the floor to pass the engineering budget. Do I hear from any other councilors? Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of passing the engineering budget?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's passed. All right, so now we're on to the next item, which is Public Works.
Public Works budget positions, there were no new positions. We consolidated five positions in the Mason Line, eliminated other positions. Didn't change the budget. All other increases are contractual. There is a memo to restore the longevity line for $565.
All right, Councilor Harris, the Chairman of DPW. Okay, there's been a motion, we have, we need a motion on the floor first to increase the longevity line by $565. Motion has been made by Council Harris. Any discussion on the motion? This is to add to the longevity line of the public, at $565. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? Now, we have a motion on the Public Works budget. Any discussion on the motion? Any councilors? Councilor, Councilor.
I'm not sure if it's in this, I don't know, when you did the flushing, what, what budget was the flushing of the hydrants? Which one was that?
That came out of the, it was a carbonation drain and water, I believe.
Okay, so I should ask that question, and drain and water, then? Okay, just wanted to check. Thanks.
We have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the snow budget, we actually cut the budget by $500,000. We looked at the last four years, I believe, that, I think there's, out of the four years, there's only one that we actually spent higher than budget amount. We reverted back, and I think three of the four years, at least a half a million dollars. So, we felt that it was a good year to make a cut. As you'll see in the trash budget, that increased significantly, so we're trying to balance that out.
Making a motion to approve.
Oh, motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. On the motion? Seeing no other, Al, just one question.
Sure.
They always do a great job with snow and ice, and it's gotten better and better every, every year. But originally, that was 300,000, if I'm not mistaken, that was brought up. Are you comfortable with cutting back on it?
I'm comfortable based on, like I said, three of the last four years. You know, we'll find out if global warming is real. If it is, we'll be decreasing the budget every year.
I know.
So, I, I'm comfortable at this time. If we do get in this situation, you know that it is one budget that we can.
Of course, yeah.
We can overspend.
Yeah, I was, I just was, remember when it was so low when we first started, and then every year, it's been work to get it up higher and higher. So, actually, not every year, we're adding it on to the tax rate at the end of the year, which I know is the standard procedure, but so.
Poor Larry starts shaking when I tell him I'm going to cut the budget, he just.
Poor Larry's the one out there chasing everyone. No, but you guys do a great job, and it's good to see a cut, obviously meets the average, so I'm fine with it. But also realize that we're, we're ready, willing, and able, especially when the calls come in to help you out if we need to. So, on, on the budget, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none, the ayes have it. Okay, solid waste.
Solid waste. The trash and recycling collection disposal budget increased by $968,722. This increase is due to contractual increases in the two contracts with vendors for the collection and disposal of solid waste. If you look at the first line item, disposal of solid waste, that budget increased by $413,487. Going from $80 per ton to $102 per ton. That's with the, the Covanta. So, the next line, the collection of solid waste, that's capital, that's a, there's a built-in 2% increase yearly with them. So, that increased by $156,835. Also included in that is a Big Belly Service Agreement for $60,000. The last line of increase is the recyclable material management. This line increased by $398,400. This increase was due to the cost per ton for recycling. And the estimated mattress recycling cost is about $276,000. So, that was the mandate from the state to recycle mattresses. So, that's put a huge, huge increase, a huge burden on us. So, that is, that's why that budget. Here to answer any questions, Tom Henry's here to, any questions on that?
Council Harris, a motion to approve. On the motion, Council Yang.
Good evening, Councilor.
All right, let's see, you said the cost for solid waste disposal went up to $102 a ton. Do you know how much it costs per ton for recycling?
Recycling per ton is right about, is it 102, 102?
102 as well, okay. I didn't know if it was maybe less, and we can try to.
Still a little bit lower than some other towns, correct, Tom?
Yes.
104, 105?
Great, and then, just the only other question I have isn't necessarily related to the numbers here, but just in process, I know we had been talking for quite a number of years about exploring composting across the city, and I know, just from driving around, I see it as well. Some folks, I think, are taking it upon themselves to hire a company that services individual residences. And so, I do see the, the bins out for composting, you know, in some single-family homes across the city. So, is that something that we are still looking to explore, to see if it's financially and logistically feasible for us to maybe even implement in some neighborhoods and not all, and see if it will provide some cost savings as well?
Sure, and I can have Tom speak to this, because Tom is actually, is part of the committee that's with Emily Lebo and the other members. So, Tom, you want to speak to that?
Good evening, councilors. The answer is yes. You know, we've started a pilot program at the Quincy High School. The, as you probably all know, the committee, the compost committee that was put together years ago prior to I coming aboard, did a very, a deep dive into, you know, what cities could be doing composting. And just recently, they started a program at Quincy High School. Ultimately, we'd like to see it expand. We're entertaining going out and possibly looking at getting a preferred vendor. So, it would still be subscription-based, but because of the number of people that would subscribe, the cost associated could be driven down. So, the more people that signed up with an individual vendor would cause the decrease in what the expense would be to residents.
Okay, and then, is there any option as well to, and I'm really just asking because I don't know, and so I'd be curious to see, but is it, is it beneficial to also take a look and see if we can work with some of the commercial developments and have them implement it maybe in the larger buildings across the city first, as opposed to going citywide? I mean, we just had Marley in here talking about, you know, some of the increases in pest control, and I do understand that is a major concern for folks, but maybe starting in targeted areas, like maybe again in the commercial buildings, do you see?
The more we can pull out of the waste stream, the more beneficial it is to us, you know, just given capacity for MSW in the state, and trying to find a home for it these days getting more difficult. So, we can pull the food waste out, that would be beneficial. Some of the larger, if you're speaking like commercial versus residential condo buildings, there's a little bit of a different mechanism as to how you get them to do that voluntarily. But it's certainly something we would always look to push.
Okay, and then as far as the costs go, would it be, I mean, obviously, it's an incurred cost to add another form of waste removal in the city, right? But is the cost per ton of that, do you know, still less than what it would be if we were to remove that then from solid waste recycling?
So, long-term, I mean, the, given just the weight of food and the water content, you know, depending on how much you were to actually divert, there would be a cost savings, simply because your tonnage going to MSW would be less. So, that $102 a ton that you're paying for Covanta to incinerate would be reduced by the amount that's going to Black Earth Composting, which is the vendor we chose to kick off the, the program initially at the high school.
Okay, that's great, I mean, if there's anything that we can do to be helpful up here, I would love to support you in any way possible.
We've always had the support of the administration, and obviously, the Commissioner and Superintendent, they're all for it as well. So, if we can reduce waste overall, it's, it's a good thing for everybody.
That sounds great, thank you for your work on it, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on the motion, any other councilors? The Chair will take a moment of privilege. It's always been a great job, because when I call Tom, he's always there, and we've always been able to work it out where we've got things picked up. But I want to make sure this year, when, I know last year, when we had a holiday, it was over the Christmas holidays and stuff, and it was kind of an unusual time where we ran into a lot where the schedule was changed, because usually, we do a Monday holiday, and we pick up on Tuesday. So, I'm just hoping that we stay with that schedule this year.
We will stay with that schedule.
Yeah, because they rang up. And I'll give Tom credit, I called him on Saturday. There was places over by Water Street and stuff that had not been picked up. And I called him about 1:00 on Saturday, and he answered the phone, and he got them over there, and the neighborhood was very, there was a whole street that was missed, and they, they got it all picked up, so I thank Tom for that. But I also, I won't be here, so it'll be somebody else taking the complaints. And I know my phone rang off the hook that week.
Us did too.
Yeah.
So.
So, but everything else, and your team made up for it really quick. And on Saturday, I know we had, we had a bunch of trucks running around picking up areas, and they did that. And I always appreciate when you call somebody in an apartment, and it's a weekend that they're not usually working, and boom, the phone gets picked up immediately. What can I do for you, Counselor? And it was getting those folks and getting their trash picked up. And by the end of the day, we had everyone happy. So just, they do a great job, but that was a little problematic, so I just hope we don't do it again. Okay. Counsel President DeMona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the vacancy of Mr. Counsel Palmucci in Ward Four, took over Ward Four duties. And during that timeframe, before he left, he said, "Listen, we get picked up on Fridays." So he said, "If you, you know, they don't get picked up, it's going to be over the weekend." So I want to thank you, Tom, for all your help over that, one of those weekends where it wasn't picked up on a Friday, and you came out right away on a Saturday, late Friday night, Saturday morning, and picked up. Really appreciate it. Now that Counsel Devine's in the position, he'll deal with that Friday situation. Just a heads up. But they're really good. Thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner Gracioso as well. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion on the solid waste? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? We'll move on to the next item. Which I believe is the, is a drain.
Drain. The drain budget is, outside of the contractual increases, there's been no changes.
Motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Go back. Counsel Mahoney.
I just wanted to ask, this is the question I wanted. So with the fire hydrants, we took that on this year, correct? Draining the fire hydrants. Draining the fire hydrants, we took that on this year.
The flushing program, yes.
Yeah, and that was through the DPW that we did that, right?
That's, yes.
And in the past, who did it in the past?
Years ago, I believe, the fire department may have done it.
But it hasn't been done for a while, is that correct?
It hadn't been done in a few years. Now we're on a, every two-year cycle, we're going to be doing this?
And the DPW will be doing it.
DPW does that. Water and sewer department, drain department.
So I know, like, it's just, it's ironic, because we add all these, we've added all these, the people to the fire department, which is great. And it just seems like, it's almost the same thing. We talk about the snow, the snow and ice, we're cutting that budget, and you get nervous and go, oh, God, it's going to probably be a bad winter. And then we add all these people to our police and fire, and it seems like we're having fires. It seems to me, it just feels more frequently in the last couple of months. And I know there was a fire in the hydrants, and I was told that the hydrants, the problem was that one of the hydrants didn't work. And it could be just one of the hydrants we didn't get to. But it was a concern, because I knew that this was, I had said that we were doing, the DPW was going through the city and making sure they're all working. I just hadn't, wasn't sure how long ago that they had been tested. And it was brought to my attention, and people were concerned about their hydrants. And I know you're going through that process. I just don't know where we stand on that process.
Again, we're entering Phase Three, which was, the first two phases went fantastic. We'll be done with that this summer. That will be, we have done all the, that'll be, all of the hydrants have been flushed in one year at a time.
Yeah.
We, when we flush them, we also check them, and we replace hydrants that are needed. So, you know, and as part of our water main replacement program, the citywide water study took into account areas that had low fire flow, or low pressure areas. Some of the roads, a good amount of them, that we are replacing water mains, we're replacing those areas that need a better fire flow, that have pressure issues. So that's all in our water master plan.
If we're working on those, and we know that there's low pressure, is that information shared with the fire department? I'm asking that only because, because it became an issue in one of the, one of the calls I went out to. And I think it was, because they got it to work. I don't know how they got it to work, but they got it to work. But obviously, you know, when you need something to work, we need it to work. And if there's things that we don't know, or the fire department, and obviously if they haven't been done in three years, and you're doing them, and you're getting through the process, it's not a criticism that we're trying to get through the process, it's just the concern of when something goes wrong, which it happens. We just talked about, you know, holidays messing up things. Things happen, but it's, that's the difference between, you know, somebody's home and containing something, or potentially something very dangerous. And it was brought to my attention, and I was told, well, the fire department used to do it. And I thought, well, you know, the thing is, is it's getting done. It's not a matter of it's not happening, but the matter is it hasn't been done in three years, it's being done now. And if we're identifying those areas that have water pressure, and we're dealing with it. Again, this isn't, I'm not trying to say that there's, there was any ill intent for anybody. I'm just bringing it up because it was concerns that were brought to me from a specific area of the city, that I know that you're also working on water mains as well, so.
I mean, one of the issues is, I mean, firemen are great at what they do, but they're not trained in hydrants like we are. Sometimes if you, the way you open a hydrant, the way you can, you can cause a water main break. You can do those things. So we, we felt it was better that our water and drain department handle those, those issues.
Again, this is, I'm just asking because it was, you know, this is, these are some of the things that happen in our community, and it becomes known by the neighbors that it's happening to, and concerns come up. And then, of course, the next concern comes up, it's like, what is not going to happen in my neighborhood? And I'm like, my answer back is simply that we're going through the process. I know that you did a presentation to us. I didn't know how far you were in that presentation. And then also, the concern is, you could have taken care of that hydrant, and it could have had, like you said, a low-pressure issue. And that's the matter of sharing that information with the fire department. I'm not sure if that information is being shared.
We work with the fire department on those issues.
Yeah, okay. So again, you know, it's just, I'm just bringing it up just because it's something that we have to be, this is when you really have to kind of work in a collaborative way to make sure that we're all doing it. I know you guys do. But, and I very rarely do I ever bring up, and it's not a criticism, it's just really bringing up, just acknowledging that this is work that's being done, and it's something that, it does have consequences if things do go wrong, so. But that's in everything that we do. So I mean, your department is, I always say, it's kind of like the department that, it's one of the hardest departments, because it's always something that's going on that you have to deal with, and it's not a glorified department. Not to say that other ones are, but it's definitely not, it's definitely not the one that people, in the middle of the night, if the water main goes, you guys are out there taking care of it in the middle of the winter, you know? But it's just one of those things that we have to discuss, and make sure that we're being open and collaborative with. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay. Any other discussion on the drain? Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion on the floor to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Onto the next item. Okay, sewer enterprise fund.
The sewer enterprise budget, no new positions. We made some small cuts in professional tech and contracted $50,000. There are increases due to the MWRA. Other assessments, they increased by $672,985. And there was an increase on the principal long-term sewer and interest-long-term sewer lines. Other than that, there were no changes.
Motion to approve by Counsel Kane. On the motion? Any councilors on the motion? Okay, I have a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? The ayes have it. Onto the sewer, onto the water enterprise fund.
The water budget, the only changes is, there is, we increased the student-intern budget from $6,644 to $10,000. We've been trying to use more interns, college interns that are studying in engineering. They help tremendously. And the other, another memo I sent you is to restore the labor-heavy MEO one, number 512415, to $88,181. That is actually four positions, split out a water sewer drain, and for some reason, Munus kicked it out. But those positions are current.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to increase, to increase the budget in the labor-heavy MEO line to $88,181. Do I have a motion? Motion has been made by Counsel Kane. On the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? The ayes have it. Now on, Counsel Kane made the motion to approve the fund. And any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to personally say, Chuck, this will be our last time working with you on the budgets and as finance director. And I just want to say, it's been a pleasure. We go back all the way to the '90s, working together for Mayor Sheets, and you've always been professional in everything you've done. Working for the city, as IT Director, as a Counselor, and it's just been a pleasure working with you. And I just want to wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Yes.
Before we, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to be a yes vote for engineering, public works, and snow and ice. I was here for collections and disposal, drain, sewer, and water. But I also like to go on the record for a yes vote on health, tourism, city clerk, elections, licensing board, census as well. Thank you.
Clerk will adjust the record. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Al, I also have to tell you that we put the raises on hold. All the raises are on hold, and we'll be taking it up on June 12th. So everything else in your budget is passed, that's the only thing.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Okay. I felt a little bad about that, but you just buttered me up. I was going to say it, and I forgot, by the way. All right. Next agenda item is the mayor's office. And Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The mayor's office budget is essentially...
Motion had been made to approve by Counsel McCarthy. You go ahead. Chris, you got anything else?
Just a couple of quick notes. One is, because I know the question will come, relative to union versus non-union employees, there are no union employees in the mayor's office. And the second piece is that we have, the empty position for the community liaison is advocated by a number of members of this party, has been filled. A person by the name of Damian Otar is taking the position, starting effectively next week. Certainly appreciate the patience of Counsel Yang and a number of other folks who have advocated for this position over the course of the last year. We do believe pretty firmly that patience was a virtue in this case. We think Damian is a real find. He's an immigrant to this country, he's lived in Quincy for 20 years. He's a social worker by trade. He has a lot of experience. He's active in the community, is a member of the Rotary, and we're really thrilled to have him come on board. I know he's going to be personally reaching out to every Counselor over the next few weeks to learn a little bit more and listen to what you folks hope and expect from this position. I do have his resume available, if anybody would like it. But with that, I'm good.
Okay, we have a motion to approve on the floor. On the motion? Counsel Devine.
I didn't know you said approve, I was approving it.
What?
I was going to approve it, I didn't know someone already did.
Oh, okay, yeah, somebody already made the motion. And Counsel Mahoney.
Can I just ask a question? I'm just a little confused, because there's a Director of Communications, and you have a Director of Media on the website, but then you don't have a media director in the budget, so.
Yeah, the media director is funded through the school department, Counsel.
So the media, and the media director is funded through the school department?
Through Comcast money, through the school department, yeah.
But works in the mayor's office?
He works in the mayor's office, but he does a lot of work in the school department as well.
Okay. It's very interesting, thank you. There's so many places that people are placed in this city, it's just, it's hard to keep track of. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else on the mayor's budget? We have a motion, Counsel Yang.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to extend some gratitude to the folks who had worked on putting together the community liaison position. I know when a couple of my colleagues and I worked on introducing it, it wasn't a tell, it was an ask to the administration, and it was met and received well. And it was a partnership through and through for the last couple of years to make sure that, you know, with something that was new to us, that we were adventuring into, it wasn't going to be perfect. And I want to commend my fellow colleague, Counsel Kane, for really spearheading the process to make sure that community voices were heard in that process and throughout that process, and making sure that, again, it's not performative, and that if we're going to move forward with this, it is something that will actually produce results for what we want to see come from this. And so it's not the end-all-be-all, this isn't going to be like a, hey, we have somebody starting on Monday, and that'll be it, and all the problems are solved by any means. But, you know, to have so many folks come together in such a collaborative way to produce something, to just at least get us started, I think is something to be noted. And so I just wanted to say thank you, and express my gratitude for that. And I'm excited to see what's going to come from this. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Mr. Walker.
Just a quick follow-up, I didn't remiss, I didn't mention during my opening that it was through the work of Counsel Kane and the commission that the mayor put together based upon the recommendation of this body that led to the creation of this position, and ultimately the hiring of Mr. Otar.
Okay, any other councilors on the mayor's budget? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? The ayes have it. Just to let you know, Chris, you know the drill better than anyone, that we'll be dealing with that on June 12th. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, celebrations account. Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This year's budget increases by $50,000, continuing the gradual trend every year of adding to the celebrations line as we do more events. And obviously, costs associated with existing events do increase. Included within this budget is a number for, is an amount for the Ruth Gordon amphitheater programming as well, which was discussed a little bit last night.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Motion has been made. On the motion? Counsel Yang.
Ms. Chairman, Mr. Walker, if you could just elaborate. I know that folks had said, and you just mentioned too, that there is funding allocated in celebrations for the Ruth Gordon amphitheater, but do we know how much, or what to expect for it?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In the media term, it's the $10,000 that Commissioner Murphy talked about last night, but that only covers the summer. So I think Commissioner Murphy was suggesting last night that the summer appears to be covered, there's going to be Friday night events, and then we sort of take it from there. We're not expecting that it's going to be the, just the $10,000. I don't know, I know this body has received an email from the Friends. I think there was a specific number request in there of $30,000. I don't know if that number's $30,000, if it's $20,000. We're going to let Commissioner Murphy continue all the great work that he's doing with the Friends group to figure out what that number wants to be, and whatever that number wants to be, there is room within the celebrations budget.
Great, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, any other councilors on the mayor's budget? Counsel Mahoney.
Just to curious, I know that we put this budget together, and it gets, it gets used. I mean, I'm not doubting that it gets used. Is there any chance we could get maybe just a breakdown of all of the events that has been used? I mean, I know we can follow it, and then also the locations of those events? And then, one of the things that, you know, when you're doing them, is there a collaboration? When the ones are specifically, like in Kilroy, I think we've only done them in Kilroy and Adams Hancock? Is there a collaboration with the other, like surround, surrounding businesses? To make sure that they're also part of kind of the events that are happening, so that you can direct people to go to them as well?
That's a good question, Counsel. I know there's, there's communication that goes out, there is discussion in terms of some of the businesses that are actively involved in some of these events. They certainly are working with it, and I think, in particular, for specific events organizers, some of these events are city events, and some of them are events run by outside organizations that the city contributes to. And I think in a lot of cases, the outside events that the city contributes to, the word is spread pretty well.
Yeah. Again, just because we're increasing the budget every year, and I'm not saying that it's something that we're not doing, but obviously the big conversation came up with that, with the Ruth Gordon amphitheater, that you were trying to push more people into downtown, to use the downtown. But, and that was said, and I'm just trying to elaborate on the fact that we're adding to this, and that we're going to actually put some money aside for the Ruth Gordon amphitheater. But it's important that we realize that this is a big city, so there's other areas that we could be promoting as well. And I just wanted to see if we are doing that, and if we could get maybe just more than just a line item breakdown of that. Great.
Yep.
Thanks much.
We have a motion on the celebrations. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? Matter passes. Okay. We'll go right along tonight. Okay, I don't want to jinx us. Office of substance abuse, Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This budget is level-funded.
Motion has been made by Counsel McCarthy to approve. On the motion? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? We move on. All opposed, seeing none, we move on to the next item. Get ready to put the president in the hot seat. Council, Council President DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the city council budget. It's pretty much level funded for us. We voted back in Janu, back last year to move the travel allowance over to the regular city council line item. So there's no difference in our pay. We're going another year without any pay increase. So the $32,400 is moved over to our regular line. And we previously did that year before, where we had it at $64,800. I know we can't talk about any contractual non-union employees. I just want to say thank you to our, our group of four, of Susan, our auditor. She's done a fantastic job with us, communicating our information to the city council. Anne and Teresa, our secretaries, that have really helped out in the office. And we have our Jen, which has done a fantastic job with our clerk of committees and keeping us all in the loop and keeping us together. And I appreciate all four of you guys helping us out daily, getting through COVID, and working things out amongst the, the office and with us. So thank you for all your communication with, with all our fellow councilors. And, and everything else looks the same.
Motion approved by Council Yang. On the motion, Council Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take an opportunity to say, because when all the other departments come up, right, we always sort of commend their staff and the leaders and whatnot. And so this is our opportunity, I think, to commend our staff. So, you know, to everyone in our office, Jen, Susan, and to the two listening at home, if they are. You all rock. I love you. You make our job really easy. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The chair will take a moment of privilege because when we get the budget together, the staff works tremendously hard to put everything. So we have all these, everything in front of us. I know a lot of councilors, including me, usually take a little time for Sue, and I try to sit down and go, and I go through the entire budget with her. And the knowledge she has is just incredible, and it's, it's, it's always a great resource. So thank you so much, Sue, for everything you did, getting all this ready. Thank you to the office staff. Thank you to Jen. When I started to go off the rails, I would get a little nudge, and I immediately moved back because she knew, knew what he was doing. Sometimes I didn't know what I was doing. And, but it's great to have a staff. And I've worked with other council staffs, and this is truly one of the best I've worked with. And they are, they're dedicated, they work hard, and they're working for the citizens, but they're also making us look good sometimes. So I got to say, I got to thank them, particularly where right now, we're nearing, nearing the end of the budget. But thank you so much. I definitely appreciate all your hard work. And whether it's at night or on the weekends, sometimes I don't expect the email to be answered, and it's answered. So I always appreciate that. Okay. Any other councilors? We have before us the motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none, the ayes have it. Just a quick note to everyone. Thank you. We had one long night last night, but the good news is we've got, we got 99% of the budget done. We got one piece to do, and that's going to be on June 12th. We'll be meeting at 6:30. I got the date right. Jen told me twice. So we'll be meeting, before that meeting, we'll also be taking up the, the capital improvement budget. So set your calendars, and I thank everyone for your time. I know sometimes the scheduling gets a little crazy, but everyone stepped up, and thank you for doing it. It's an important thing we do, where this is my last budget I'll be doing with the city council after 14 years. So I just want to say thank you to all my colleagues. Thank you for your patience. And I, I try to make sure that no question by any council got unanswered, and everyone had an equal opportunity to talk, to speak. And we're doing the work of the people that elect us. And our job is a check, with a check of government, and we're supposed to ask questions and, and probe into things. And I can honestly say that all the councilors here did that. So I thank you. We complimented sometimes, but also sometimes we don't compliment. But we compliment the people who are doing great jobs, but we're here to check the, the balances of the city with a check, where the last ones it comes to. So thank you for all your hard work, and we'll finish the budget on June 12th. So thank you, councilors. And motion adjourned.
Great job.